Here remotely.
Hey, listener.
Here.
Trustee Malakas.
Here.
Trustee Underdon.
Here.
Trustee Ruben.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Just a quick note for everybody, these microphones, you have to speak at this closely and turn and push the button to create it when you want to speak, otherwise it won't be there and it won't be able to get enough to listen to. Proper.
Trustee Paul Wax is unable to join us to speak because he's traveling from, he's in Fort Lauderdale, so we don't need to feel sorry for him. He's asked to participate remotely, it would be assumed, in compliance with the village's established remote meeting policy, as required official forms are present, is there consensus among the board? Can I contact him? I see that there is, okay. We are not live streaming your speaking tonight because we're not holding for a few months. But the video recording will be available on the village's YouTube channel. So, we're here in Park District, I want to thank the Park District for accommodating us while we undergo renovations in the council chambers and public safety departments, places upstairs as well. And we're going to be here for as much as eight months, so thank you to the Park District, thanks for everybody for coming here. Before I go to our regular agenda, I want to say something about, as the residents of the village learned over the last few months, home rule is automatically created in municipalities with populations between 25,000. Smaller municipalities like Plankton can be home ruled only if they vote for it in a referendum. Home rule makes me think of Betsy Warren, who was Plankton's village president when I first joined the village board almost 40 years ago. Betsy was smart, accomplished, PhD in political science, a subject she taught at William and Mary's while she was there. Applied for political science expertise. Betsy decided with home rule to come in here from Plankton, its residents. So she left the village to work and put home rule on the ballot to a referendum when she was president back in 1980. Betsy was way ahead of her time. None of our less than 25,000 population neighbors had even thought about home rule, let alone voted for it. So perhaps not surprisingly, Plankton voted against it in 1980. What a difference 36 years makes. Now firstly, all of our neighbor communities are home ruled, and in the elections earlier this month, our residents overwhelmingly voted in favor of home rule, 63% to 37%. The village finally brought up the Betsy. It's no secret that I and other village coordinators are in favor of home rule. We believe it's the right choice for Plankton, but we recognize that it was not our choice to make, it was our residents' choice, your choice, and you made. I want to thank our village manager, Phil Corrali, our deputy village manager, Nikki Larson, and our communications manager, Sammy Pansell, among others in the village staff, for educating our residents on the pros and cons of home rule so that we can make an educated choice. I want to thank our residents for taking the time to learn about home rule, talking to each other about it, there were some residents who I know were talking to other residents about why they thought home rule was a good idea, and I think. They did that so that we could all make a thoughtful, educated, and carefully considered choice. The home rule referendum was high level, a high level exercise in citizenship. Although the home rule referendum was approved by various extension committees already, I recognize that some of our residents voted no. And I want to assure those residents that the bad stuff you were told might happen, out of control, wild spending, wild borrowing, wild taxing government, won't happen. It hasn't happened to any of our neighbors, and it won't happen here. Tonight, as we promised, we're going to pass the ordinance, we are opposing it not because of it. To all of our residents, regardless of how you vote it, I pledge that we will use our new home rule authority to better represent you, our residents, to more efficiently provide services and infrastructure than you expect. Thank you for giving us the guidance. Okay, the next item on the agenda is consideration of minutes, the minutes were circulated to the board and published online. Unless there are any comments, is there motion to approve the whole minutes for October 17, 2024, according to trustee's regular meeting acts, October 17, 2024.
Salute.
So. It's been moved second in all favor.
Aye.
The ayes carry it, including Mr. Paul Wax, and the motion carries. All right, the next item on the agenda is public comment. This is where we allow members of the public to address the board on topics that are within our purview and jurisdiction but not listed on tonight's agenda. If you want to speak out about a member that is on the agenda, we'll ask you to wait until the agenda is called and we'll give you an opportunity to speak then. If your matter is on consent agenda, please let us know if you'd like to talk about that, we'll move it through consent agenda so that we can talk about it. Anyone wanting to speak should fill out a written speaker form, which is located at the back of the room, and submit it to the village manager. Public comment is intended as an opportunity for the comments to speed the village board, we'll listen to everything they have to say, we will not ordinarily discuss or engage with the common at that time. It's appropriate, we may ask the village manager, village staff, and staff to meet at tonight or later. All speakers will be limited to minutes, fair, restricted, and force the rule, per our established policy, will limit all public comment to a total of three minutes. Trustee's futures to respect, civil without end if, we'll ask that all members in the audience will frame and applaud any other comments during or after any speaker, and please find and be sure to sit directly at the microphone to ensure. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items? I don't see any, okay. The next item on your agenda is reports of committees, the first report ordinarily is committee of the whole, we did not have a meeting, so I do have a report, we did have a meeting, so I guess. The next report is finance committee, and Trustee Ruben is the chair of that.
Thank you, we met to say, and the committee discussed monthly financial reports, monthly financial work, general fund, for general fund revenue performance, where a number of village revenue sources exceeded both the monthly budget targets and parameters received, including property taxes. Also places heating taxes, income tax, sewer taxes, and monument sales at one. We discussed the fact that, as we noted here a couple of times now, sales taxes this year are generally running lower than last year. And we're presuming that that will continue to be a trend, which is still a bit of a budget, we talked about. Expenditures in all of our funds are pretty much on track for this time of year. I'll note that the village's semi-annual debt service payments are on tonight's agenda approval, which includes just over two and a half million dollars in principal and interest payments. We also discussed the modification to the village's donation policy to accommodate donations from the newly formed Public Safety Foundation, which is an independent 501/23 organization, building private products that helps support our public safety department's equipment and training. We're very, very grateful to founders Keroz and Herwin, and others for their efforts in this regard. Lastly, the committee discussed the draft calendar year 2025 budget in detail. Reviewing our revenue projections, apartment award plans, capital projects, financial assumptions, et cetera. There are a number of extraordinary projects planned for the coming year, including the construction of the Plankton Golf Club, completion of renovations of public safety living quarters and council chambers, which is why we're here tonight, that was on the. And significant enhancements to our water main sidewalk along our. I would encourage everyone to view the draft budget online at Moses' website. And because we're going to get, we'll talk about it a bit, but we will be voting on this draft budget, which looks like this, in our next monthly meeting on the center.
Thank you. Thanks for that report, the next report is the plan commission, and trustee listener, thanks, actually, I know there was a meeting.
There was a meeting, and we did have a very busy agenda last night, Wednesday of November 20. We began by conducting two exterior appearance reviews on two new businesses in downtown Plankton. We approved a flag sign for a new eyeglass store at 344 Park Avenue called the Eevee's Eyewear, and did welcome him to the community. We also did an exterior appearance review for a new awning and awning signage at 342 Park Avenue. The applicant proposed to have the names of two businesses on the sign. The space is going to be occupied by, centered by a design, it's an interior design store. But the applicant also runs pathways of potential, which is a student tutoring business, which I believe they may be using their space sometimes after hours. So the signage on the awning had the names of both businesses, and the commissioners were just concerned about possibly reducing the amount of lettering on the, on the awning for aesthetic purposes. The applicant wasn't at the meeting, but we did approve the awning and the sign on the condition that there would be a certain reduction in the amount of this lettering on the signage, so that it would be more keeping with the aesthetic that we're looking for in downtown Plankton. We then went on to hold our public hearing on the comprehensive plan. It was very well attended by the public, testing associates began the presentation and talking about the contents of the plan. And then there was an opportunity for all the residents who were attendants to speak and state any concerns or questions that they had on the plan. I would say generally, they were extremely complimentary of the work that was done by the plan commission. The general questions that we did hear really related to preserving the character of downtown Plankton, talking about the density in downtown Plankton and the type of parking issues that can be created more by adding density. These were all things that we have been dealing with as we've been working on the, the plan, and I think we've given a lot of consideration to those, those ideas. But it was very, very favorable overall. We did end the meeting with the commission approving a recommendation to bring the comprehensive plan to the village board for consideration, and I expect that to happen in the next month or two. Thank you.
Thanks for that informative report. The next report is the golf life group committee, ordinarily, Trustee Paul Wax will do that, sits in sunny Florida, we're going to have our golf club manager Stella Manos report on the golf project.
Thank you, good evening. We met this past Monday, we were reviewing the month of October, which was a great month for golf, we were 60% over budgeted revenues and 40% over budgeted grounds. So October was a fantastic month for business. Majority of the time, we review the draft 2025 capital improvement plan, highlights the clubhouse project and our park pad project, which we hope to have completed this year. After this year, we'll be 100% fully able to have parks going off after in one month, which is very good for revenue target. And that was it.
Thanks for that report, and good news, my next report is the sustainability test, for the trustee, who has whatever time about that.
Good evening, everyone, the STF held a meeting on November 22. We continue to discuss and refine plans for 2025, which include continuing to educate the public about buckthorn and other non-native based species, supporting the development of the sustainability action plan, and endangering other village permissions to local areas of mutual support. Earlier this month, we sent a postcard to the community that explained the importance of removing buckthorn and promoting the village's curbside buckthorn collection pilot program. Another postcard that we mailed this month, which will be, which will raise awareness of food waste associated with Thanksgiving and other holiday celebrations. On November 2, the Plankton Community Garden held its 7th annual pumpkin smash. Approximately 4.22 tons of pumpkins were diverted from landfills and composted, which reduces methane gas emissions. The village and LRS helped support this event. We also supported a political science assembly program where residents could drop a political science act in November, the November 5 election. The village partnered with Willan Edison and LRS on this initiative, there was no cost, and there was no cost to the village. Participation was lower than expected, however, there were so many signs that rose. And our next, our final STF meeting for the year will be on December 3, thank you.
Thanks for that report, the next report, council for improving the community, and Trustee Scott, which our representative.
Thank you, the GCIC met on Monday, the upper court, and we began with updates from the community relations communication, and integrated community feedbacks and surveys. The primary point of conversation focused on the events of the committee update as a case to light the light of celebration. The GCIC will be partnering with Glendale Public Library to offer event holders a sensory room that's rested from what could become an overwhelming atmosphere. The council is likewise looking to have a receptacle to accept donations in the shape of passing gloves as you're then going to be communicating these components in village communications. During the integrated community feedbacks of the committee update, the council discussed the creation and issuance of a community survey to collect feedback and identify opportunities for future engagement. The next council meeting is scheduled for Monday, December 2nd at 5:30.
Thanks, thanks, thanks for that report, the next report is the preservation commission, and Trustee Underdon is our representative on that.
Thank you. Preservation Commission met Tuesday, November 12, the petition was filed. It's the permanent application was filed for the honorary landmark, 794 Greenwood Avenue. The commission deferred this review to the December meeting, choosing instead to send a letter to the applicant to facilitate communication. This property was landmarked in 1993 and holds significant historic and architectural value, as the former home of village president, Richard Calhoun. The commission also, in the honor of 255 Hazel Avenue, who would apply for an honorary landmark. And he also is considering assuming a certified landmark, and a certified landmark is even more on the picture than a regular honorary landmark. And he is reviewing that matter with staff now, trying to decide which he wants to go for. The certified landmark comes with the opportunity for securely borrowed incentives from, from the state of financial sense, and that's being looked into. In addition, the staff and the commission are taking a look at public awareness and feeling, there was a general feeling that in the past, perhaps, the commission has served too much as a regulatory body and not enough as an advocacy body. And so we're doing the two areas of improvement, I think, one is we'll be adding some more notices in the village newsletter, and second, trying to increase the knowledge of our architectural heritage, and which will also deepen our community engagement. The commission also completed a review of mid-century modern homes in the village, which may qualify for inclusion as historically significant. And they're also interested in developing a list of just really interesting or unique properties that may not be historic, but they should be definitely recognized. Further research is underway in that this area. So that is the preservation commission reporting.
Thanks for that.
Everyone for this one?
Let me just say, this president's house, it was full, it was about 35 years ago, so we can't say that, like, the house is still there. All right, the next report is the tree commission, Trustee Underdon, is our representative on that.
The tree commission only meets once every other month, and our primary focus is managing, or services advisors to the village staff on managing land and trees of ownership, the village ownership. So we did not have a meeting, I did talk to the members, and they wanted to remind everyone that the buckthorn collection program has been a success. It's consistently been getting five to 10 requests every Monday, resulting in about 15 cubic yards of buckthorn clippings each week. So we also will be working in the future hand in hand with Sustainability Commission to try to get a handle on buckthorn. While primarily interested in October and publicly, we also want to support the work of Sustainability Commission. The next meeting of the tree commission will be on December 9.
Thanks for that report, that concludes the reports of committees, the next item on the agenda is report of officers, and first, the village manager.
Good evening, and thank you, Eric Lunt, I just have a few items on my report this evening that I wanted to share. The first is included in the board's packet, and it is a list of a series of terms of the second amendment to the village's agreement with the forest reserves of Cook County. If you will recall, the village and the forest reserve have had an agreement placed since approximately 1922 for the use of forest reserve district lands as a component and around half of the Plankton Golf Club. That agreement was completely reviewed and the first amendment was approved by both the village and forest reserve boards in 2017. And what that really does is govern the approximately 66 acres, the front nine, and areas of the clubhouse campus and our riding range. So that, that amendment, that 2017 amendment, addressed a series of issues that we were working through with the district, and also included a buildable area, a boundary, if you will, for the hypothetical replacement of the clubhouse, should that ever come into being. And obviously, in April of 2023, voters here in the community approved a referendum to supply $15 million in taxpayer funds for that replacement. So following the approval of referendum, we began the process of designing the building and the subsequent areas around it, and discovered that that buildable area was not sufficient to accommodate the building, the stormwater systems, the plant geothermal systems, as well as some modifications to the apartment. And so we began to talk with the forest preserve district, what that could look like, to accommodate that, a change in the buildable area. I'm pleased to report that over the last half a year or so, we have made a lot of progress, and just this Tuesday, I attended the forest preserve district board meeting, where the terms of this updated second agreement were directed to the real estate committee and ultimately to the forest preserve district board for its consideration. Our expectation is that the updated agreement will be on the village board's agenda for approval in December. And once that is considered by, considered and approved by both the forest preserve and village, we will commence again, finalizing plans and rolling through the bid packets to get construction underway, probably at the end of the first quarter or beginning of the second quarter of 2025. So I wanted to just share this update, affirm with you that this has moved forward and that we're continuing to move forward. Myself and village attorney will both be attending the forest preserve district board meeting in December, and we'll answer questions if they, if they arise. But otherwise, we are still anticipating a final agreement that will be on your agenda in December. Just a few other quick items, village president spoke this evening about the successful referendum in early November relative to the village's home rule status, with over 63% of voters favoring that, that change in overall. Once the election results were certified, which we're anticipating will take place in the next few days, potentially early, have they certified them already? Don't think, okay, yeah, I think it's, we're anticipating either Monday or Tuesday. Once that takes place, the next step from there is for the village clerk, which is me, to send a certified copy of those results with the village's intent to the secretary of state to inform the state in a way about the election results, and if that's right, we will officially have home rule status. I want to echo President Ron's comments and thank our residents for their thoughtful engagement and public information process that we have observed through much of this year and in previous years. I really appreciate it personally, the many questions and comments that we received through the process. I also have to extend my gratitude to our staff, especially Nikki Larson, Ben Wyver, and Sammy Hansel, who facilitated so many of our public outreach efforts, and Nikki in particular, in feeling with a lot of the more complex tax related questions that we've heard from, from the community. So what comes next? In the first quarter of 2025, the board and staff will need and committee of the whole to discuss the potential initiatives the village may undertake with home rule authority. The first step in all of this, actually, as President Ron noted, will take place tonight, with board's consideration of ordinance to commit the village to maintain on private tax limitations. I will note that the budget that Trustee Ruben mentioned this evening, that staff presented on Tuesday, did not, was not developed with home rule in mind, it was developed as a, as a non-home rule budget or a separate process. And so there are no changes in the 2025 budget related to the village's home rule authority. We will be, in the first quarter, as I mentioned, reviewing possible code amendments or fee structures in order to consider and prioritize in the next year those initiatives to ensure that we're thoughtfully approaching those next steps with home rule. So we do encourage the community to continue to remain engaged with us on this topic, and we will have a briefing, as always, on the village's website through our various means of communication on the results of those efforts. Despite the fact that it unexpectedly snowed way more today than we thought it was going to, leaf collection is still under play. And actually, it's been, as Stella said, a unique fall, and we have a lot of leaves still on the trees. We're anticipating snows go to melt over the next couple of days, and leaves are going to continue to fall, our leaf collection. Our leaf collection crews are attacking this full force and currently working through the community, but not expected to complete our leaf collection operations, likely until the second week of December, which is somewhat later than typical. As I said, the snow is going to slow that progress just a bit. Our website is being updated regularly with information about where those crews are. They have been doing a great job of being efficient and effective in that effort. We are working with land landscaping on that and our crew supplement that from tax time. But check the village's website for updated information on where those crews will be and when they'll be in our neighborhood. It is hard to believe that it's the end of November and that means Thanksgiving is next week. Due to the Thanksgiving holiday, all village offices will be closed, both Thursday, November twenty-eighth and Friday, November twenty-ninth. Thursday and Friday garbage and recycle collection will be, will be delayed one day. And in addition, in honor of our annual employee appreciation luncheon, our village offices will close tomorrow at twelve-thirty, as we will be celebrating the many accomplishments of our staff who worked in the last year. Last thing I wanted to mention is the fun that's coming next Friday, November twenty-ninth. The downtown is again, will again be a glow and beautiful lights brighten up the winter months. This will be our second year of what we believe is the best light display anywhere. And I'll challenge anybody who disagrees. There are literally hundreds of thousands of energy-efficient LED lights that have been installed in our business district as our public works has done an amazing job. It's been fantastic. We're excited about lighting up downtown. So for light of lights, don't forget, it's not just the lights that, that go on in our many family-friendly activities, food, beverages, rides, character meet and greets, live music, the annual community holiday drive, as well as the initiatives that are going to the council for inclusion in the community. So we really hope that everyone has the opportunity to come out and enjoy the lights, support our local businesses that, that evening. So in addition, Thanksgiving weekend is usually a big shopping weekend. In addition to light of lights on Friday, I encourage everyone to always shop local first, especially this holiday season, and to especially do so on Saturday, November thirtieth, which is small business Saturday. And then again, the weekend, December sixth, really eighth, for the Chamber of Commerce ready invitation sale. Many of our businesses are participating in that, in both of those events, with special incentives and discounts for shoppers. So as we all know, Glencoe is a community of small businesses, particularly our retailers. So these are really great opportunities to support and patronize our local businesses for the holidays. Always, please remember to shop Glencoe first. And with that, just spend a happy Thanksgiving on behalf of the staff to everyone listening.
Thanks for that report. Next item on the agenda is the village president's report. I already gave my report I was talking about on the little. So let me just say, everybody have a Thanksgiving from the little report. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Consent agenda includes items that are published online. We, reviewed by the board members, Peter Biggitt, who approved that, we call. We don't think they want further public discussion, so we're going to go down that, all at once. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So, um, say it.
It's been moved and seconded by some of the roll calls.
Trustee Hallwass?
Yes.
Trustee Liston?
Yes.
Trustee Alamos?
Yes.
Trustee Hunterdon?
Yes.
Trustee Rubin?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
The motion carries consent agenda is approved. The next item on the agenda is regular business. The first item of regular business is the public hearing taking the two thousand twenty-four tax levy to Glencoe and Glencoe Public Library. And I'll ask our deputy village manager, CFO, Nikki Larson, to report.
Good evening. The draft tax levy included in the packet this evening was presented to the finance committee in October and has not been modified since that date. It does include the levy for the Glencoe Public Library. The total levy, including debt service and the public library, is eighteen million four hundred eighty-three thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars. And it's an increase of four hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars, or a two-point-six-five percent increase from the twenty twenty-three tax extension. Excluding debt service, the village's levy is closer to a four percent increase. That will be reduced by the county down to a, an amount of exceed of three-point-four percent. We do ask for percentages slightly higher to account for new growth in the community. So that limit is set by the state of Illinois, by the Department of Revenue, and is consistent with the property tax extension law. The Glencoe Public Library's levy specifically is a hundred and nineteen thousand dollar increase, or just shy of four percent. The same would apply there. Their levy will be reduced in accordance with the retail regulations. And the debt service levy is there actually going down by five-and-a-half percent. And that really just has to do with the way that the village's debt schedule is structured as we're paying down additional principal, that any of that service payment is going down. I would normally say this is small on the screen, but tonight it's actually quite easy to read. This is the breakdown of levy. By the line item, you can see the general corporate levy and lease pension levy, total about twelve-point-seven million, which is about a four percent increase. And you can see the assumptions that we have there to account for the PAB property tax levy. On the canvas screen, you have the breakdown of the debt service levy, and then the library total as well. There is a component of the property tax levy that the county will calculate to reimburse the village for any funds that happen this year. We will not give that number until early next summer. So we have not included an estimate for that in our request of tax levy. That will happen automatically with the county. After the hearing takes place tonight, we will be happy to hear any public comment on the proposed tax levy. Following comments, we will place this tax levy for consideration on the village board's agenda at December meeting. And then following the rule in December, we will file a tax levy with the county. And I'm happy to answer any question one more.
Village board has already talked about this, so there are questions. Is there a motion to approve the tax levy?
Some of them.
There are seconds. Excuse me, close your, I'm sorry. Is there, is there a second, but close?
Okay.
Okay. Roll call please. Oh, there's a wait room?
Just close the public area.
Okay. All of them?
Aye.
Aye.
The public area is closed. Okay, the next item on the agenda is consideration of an ordinance codifying the intention of the board trustees regarding the use of home rule taxing authority. Does everyone remember that our last meeting, we officially proclaimed that if we have home rule authority, we inflict ourselves to the current taxing limitations. One of the ironies of being non-home rule is we put taxing to it, still we got home rule. So now we're good to do it. And I'll ask of our deputy, so the CFO, Nikki Larson, to present.
President Rowan, so as president Rowan articulated, feels like yesterday, but at the office routine village board meeting, the board then approved a resolution both to authorize a home rule referendum question on November fifth ballot, and then also a resolution declaring their intent to continue to abide by the property taxation law, which is consistent with the village's past practice, the village's financial policies. If the village were granted home rule. Alert, as we talked about already this evening, the November fifth election, the Glencoe voters approved the home rule referendum by majority vote. So in tonight's packet, accordingly, is the ordinance to formalize the forest declaration that will continue to provide by the ETEL ordinance, the ETEL regulation, and that will codify your intention in the municipal code, which is something.
Thanks for that report. We talked about it before I died, unless there's any discussion. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Some of them.
The second.
It's been moved and seconded by roll calls.
Trustee Hallwass?
Yes.
Trustee Liston?
Yes.
Trustee Alamos?
Yes.
Trustee Hunterdon?
Yes.
Trustee Rubin?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
The motion carries and we now have a prior plan with prior taxation. Next item on the agenda, there are two items that go together. The next item is consideration of a resolution adopting a final to that subdivision charter. An agreement of five brier ways. And also, as we'll talk about it once, consideration of ordinance approving plaid of taxation for public right-of-way, actions by prior way. I'll ask our local service director, Taylor Ratcher, to report the minor event. And five brier ways on our agenda. So it's not a subdivision.
President Rowan, as a reminder, this is currently one house on one zoning content. The subdivision is three new single-family lots for development. And also related to this is the proposed reconfiguration of what's now the handlehead, Sios Green and. Which requires the platification. So on tonight's agenda, it is two items on your agenda that we can consider together. It does require two separate motions. One is the five subdivision, which includes development agreement, and also a separate platification. As a reminder, this is step four in the four-step process. You can see this board had included the final, excuse me, preliminary plat a couple of months ago. And final plat went back to plan commission in October. We'll talk to you about the recommendations in a moment, and they're now, it's step four, which is the final plat, which is the last step in the process. This new conditions, one house at the end of western end of Warren Lane. We're on three sides by the country club, which you may remember as provided. So comments about the concerns of home rule safety, which was a big part of the initial discussion a couple of months ago when we talked about the preliminary plat. When the board approved the preliminary plat, we did so with instructions to the property owner to continue their discussions with neighbors and the country club about possible ways to mitigate those concerns about home rule safety. And they have done that, we'll talk about that in a minute. There's the final class subdivision. At the three lots, one, two, three, north and south. Shaded in the area is the part of what is currently wired, five brier, that's going to become, at the platification, it's approved, public right-of-way. It's part of that newly conforming code stack. The plan commission, in their review, had recommended that this be approved with a few recommendations, one of which was the condition that the east-west property line right here, it's the northern property line at lot three, which runs east and west, be reconfigured slightly to allow a driveway that is not shining headlights directly into on the house here at seven brier. That has been done, they have configured this. And then we'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. They have another condition regarding that driveway meeting last month. These, even with this reconfiguration, all the lots meet all zoning requirements and all engineering requirements, and not requiring any variations in this process. We talked a bit about this, public easement. There was a lot of concerns, especially if you remember spoken country club, about golf balls lining up its property, dangers of that, um, consent. And there was some discussion about potentially preventing structures, pools, tennis courts, et cetera, near the outer edges of this property. If you remember last, last time we talked about this, there is the area in red. It's a, a public easement along the west side of the property, this is already existing. This is a public utility, a drain easement along the west side of the property. This narrower part is, is new, that's for public utilities going through a newly proposed site and public, the public easement. In response to this board's request that the applicant continue their conversation with the, with the neighbors and the country club about mitigating those concerns, the owner and the country club have let the village know that they have entered into a private easement to prevent development in this green area at the southern edge of lot three. This is the area that's not covered by public easement, so there would be nothing preventing, the village is then preventing swimming pool or accessory structure back there. But in response to that request from the board, they have to do it into a private easement, which would prevent any, any construction, that would prevent swimming pools, tennis courts, any structures. The platification, the cul-de-sac construction, this is not reconstruction, reconfiguration again. This is not something that the applicant is asked to do. This is something that our public works department has determined to be a requirement of this subdivision. This necessitates both vacation and dedication for public right-of-way. The dedication significantly exceeds the vacation. So the amount that they, that the owner is giving to the village as public right-of-way significantly exceeds the amount that the village is receiving back. That's why there's not been any discussion of compensation from the local source for this dedication and, and vacation. Vacation is the five adjacent lots that's all shown on public, to platification. You're just more detailed on that, this has been in your packet at times, no change to this proposal. Public comment, the first time around, preliminary plat, that was a significant amount of public comment from neighbors up and down, brier way, and members of the city country club, and so the country club itself. In response to that, the plan commission recommended several changes, and those changes were made. And the board also recommended that conversation continue. When we got to the final plat, we received no new break comments. And there was no opposition at the final plat plan commission meeting last month. Staff does feel that the applicant has, has worked to address those concerns of the oath of the plan commission and the village. Again, the country club has agreed to this final easement for the applicant. There are representatives of both the country club and the applicant, they are here. Any questions for them? The plan commission did unanimously recommend approval of both of these plaques, platification and the final plat. With one condition on the final plat, they did recommend that there be a requirement that the driveway of lot three be constructed in substantial conformity with the location shown here. So although they have agreed to change the property line to allow this to have a gentler entry into lot three, which doesn't shine lights and that will pass down here on the seven brier, there would be nothing without this condition to prevent the applicant from doing a different driveway, a different degree driveway, which would kind of fulfill that purpose of that, really with a special. The plan commission recommended a condition of approval that be built in substantial conformity as is shown here. That condition is part of the resolution that is for each night. If you adopt the resolution, no changes, it would include this condition that's recommended by the, planned by the. Again, motions, this does require several motions. One is to the resolution, the final plat and development agreement, and separately the ordinance approved the platification. Changes, it's determined to be appropriate. Again, that resolution doesn't have that. Plan commission, again, the applicant is here tonight as well, as the country club.
Anybody from the audience want to say anything you don't need to? Okay. Or anyone who, or we have talked about this, so if there is any discussion, is there a motion, a joint motion to approve both the resolution and the ordinance?
Can do it in the, how many? President, whatever. I just, you can do this as you're suggesting in a non-bus fashion, vulnerable together. I do want to note that the vote requirement for the vacation ordinance is five out of six trustees. The, the plat subdivision ordinance is, our resolution is a symbol of the order. So do know that as you're making your motion.
So moved at a short basis.
Seven.
It's been moved and seconded by some roll call.
Trustee Holwachs.
Yes.
Trustee Liston.
Yes.
Trustee Milalos.
Yes.
Trustee Hunter.
Yes.
Trustee Ruben.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously, so the resolution and the ordinance are approved. Thank you. The next item, sorry, Taylor, I think you should. The next item on the agenda is consideration of a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute an agreement that SafeBuild for plan review and inspection services. Taylor, back.
President Rowan, plan review and inspection services, this covers all building permits, the review of the building, including all building permits, as well as building, plumbing, electrical, structural inspections. We've been working with HR3, that's, that's 2017, that's when we began working with HR3, third-party company to, to cover all of these services. Models work well, it allows us to scale up, scale down, and this is very much a simple way. There are some months in which you might have twice as many reinsurance inspections as other months, so the ability to pay on an hourly basis, a third-party contract works well for a village or a spouse. However, cost at least, especially in 2022 and 2023, we saw very significant cost increases with HR3. In response to this over the last year, we have had quite a few discussions, bringing these services back in-house, with full-time, full-part-time village employees, hybrid system, we might have in-house staff, where we can also overflow, or certain types of reviews go to these, these contract companies, or to continue with a fully third-party model. We sent out, we sent out our RFP a few months ago, and the RFP included the opportunity to respond to a variety of different texts, so we priced out and prepared all of these different potential paths. We got two responses, and we have determined that those facilities that we feel the best path forward is to maintain the similar system that we have right now, but we have a third-party reviewers and inspections, and all of them make actual inspections. The two responses we got for HR3, we currently have at SafeBuild, which is another large national firm, SafeBuild works with many neighboring communities who we've spoken to, out of the world, experienced with SafeBuild. We feel that HR3 provides a similar level of service to what we're getting with HR3 right now, and there are few response, they provide significant hourly costs, 25 to 30% of any type of inspection. Again, we would maintain the ability to scale up now as needed, so with the busier months, we would need enough work, and in our, in our slower months, we may provide enough work in the opposite of these months. SafeBuild is also offered to be our consultant to assist with code updates of no additional cost as we go through that process over the next couple of months. It also mentioned that with their current, with their current vendor, we do pay a substantial amount of administrative costs, which SafeBuild is offering at no additional cost, along with their reduced hourly. The proposed agreement would be a one-year agreement with two optional one-year extensions, and so for tonight's motion to approve this resolution, authorizing the village manager to enter into this agreement with SafeBuild, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Do you have any questions or to?
I just want to confirm, the new firm, the staff has all required certifications from the International Co-Council and the appropriate licenses from the city.
They do, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I was, I was just wondering about the costs in years two and three.
Yes, so it is a, a cost increases for those two optional one-year extensions would be the lesser of local, uh, local inflation rate, yeah, and, or, it's 3%, it's a 3% total, 3% because the less.
I think that wasn't the teaser rate.
It might be a teaser rate for year four, we'll see. Okay.
Just want to add, some on the board may remember that we had an issue several years ago with the services being provided by a temporary, uh, funding firm, we had an issue with identification, which we later resolved with the revised identification clause. We made sure that that provides identification, is in this.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Several roll call, please.
Trustee Holwachs.
Yes.
Trustee Liston.
Yes.
Trustee Milalos.
Yes.
Trustee Hunter.
Yes.
Trustee Ruben.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Motion carries, and so we now have a deal with SafeBuild. Thanks, Taylor, for bringing this. That concludes our regular business. Is there any other business? If not, I'll ask for a motion to move into closed session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 2C21, for due closed session minutes, 11, pending evocation, and 2C1, employment access. Motion to go closed session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Trustee Holwachs. Yes, okay.
Yes.
Trustee Liston.
Yes.
Trustee Milalos.
Yes.
Trustee Hunter.
Yes.
Trustee Ruben.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.